Bruce, Mike.
Oh, we had a good computer guy in there.
Oh, look, look!
Hi, Bruce. You know the five dollars?
He doesn't work for me anymore.
Huh?
He doesn't work for me.
No, this guy. Oh, he don't work for me anymore? I'm used to him.
All right, seven o'clock, roll call is council meeting to order. We'll have roll call. Johnson.
Michelle.
Lloyd. Ben Teal. And city clerk, William Manson. Andy Patton, our city attorney. Joanne Frost, our I want to help redevelopment. Sean Dirich, our city maintenance. And Justin Candace, our city engineer. Will stand for flag to lead. Flag to lead. This is the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before we start, you guys want to make sure you're connecting your lights successfully. Recording, we're gonna have some changes to video.
The open forum request, we got one, anybody else got any? And we'll have the approval of the agenda.
I'll make motion to approve the agenda. Can we add...
Did you add those?
Oh, I did add, uh, adoption ordinance twenty dash fourteen, amendment council city code, and twenty fourteen oh five.
And resolution number twenty fourteen dash twenty nine.
Twenty fourteen dash twenty nine. I know what I have. For adoption of new business.
Yes.
Okay, then we need approval of the agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda with the additions.
I'll second that. Motion by Michelle, second by Lloyd to approve the agenda. Dan, how do you vote?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Michelle?
Aye.
I vote aye, motion carried for. And we'll move on to approval of the consent agenda minutes.
Make motion to approve the consent agenda?
Second.
Motion by Dan, second by Michelle to approve the consent agenda. Mark, Michelle, how do you vote?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Dan?
Aye.
I vote aye, motion carried for. Accounts payable.
That's part of the consent agenda?
That's it. Resolution twenty dash fourteen dash twenty seven, authorized changes to the bank's signature card.
That's part of the consent agenda?
That's the agenda too, right?
Go on, Jim.
Okay. Monthly utility adjustment. We're gonna truth of taxation public hearing, two thousand fifteen, levy and budget.
You need to open the public hearing for the truth of taxation public hearing.
Okay, the property tax increases two percent. Like if you own a house, property value back in two thousand fourteen, your taxes were six oh two. And if you go on property tax in two thousand fifteen, for a value house a hundred and ten thousand, your property tax would be six hundred and ten dollars, eight dollars more a year. For that, and then if a house was a hundred and fifty thousand dollars in two thousand fourteen, your tax would be nine oh three, and two thousand fifteen, your tax would be nine sixteen, it'd be thirteen dollars more a month. And on a two hundred thousand dollar home, in two thousand fourteen, your taxes one thousand two oh four. On two thousand fifteen, property value, your tax would be two hundred and twenty thousand. Dollar home tax would be one thousand two hundred and twenty-one dollars. You have any questions?
I just wanna make sure before we begin, Mayor, that the public hearing is officially opened? Right. Okay. And then, public can comment, we'll disclose the public hearing with a vote on that before you vote on the levy.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'd like to make a comment on the proposed budget for two thousand and fifteen. Before I do that, though, I'd like to thank you guys for serving to the law. It can be a thankless job. But I'm not coming up here to talk about the budget going up. I'm talking about one part of it that's going down, that maybe that's not the best decision, maybe. Looking at the part about where the council pay was changed, was decreased from, uh, per meeting pay to a monthly, uh, I guess what, you probably have salary. I think that might be more of a disincentive than anything, especially with how much work kinda goes into, you know, the council. And that's something that, you know, this council might still be able to change, but a new council wouldn't be able to change that. They can increase their pay. So if it's not changed this year, it wouldn't be changed until...
Election time.
That wouldn't be changed until, what's next, June twenty fifteen?
Sixteen. Change in election time.
Yeah, be twenty sixteen, but then it'd be the council that came after that, so be twenty seventeen. But I know around that time, there was something that somebody thought, uh, the mayor wasn't using the council pay. I just wanted to state that I didn't think that was the case. Just state that Mayor Henry was part of the solution then. Our current mayor at the time was billing almost thirteen thousand in one year, and this entire council only bill almost ten thousand in two. That was like October or so. And I, you know, just, if there's disagreement with one meeting, you know, I mean, I can see if there's a trend to bring it up, but if there's just one meeting, maybe write a slide. I just think it's kind of a disincentive just to have a flat salary. Because then you don't have to do as much, you don't have to work in summer. In the time that you're working for, you're maybe not getting paid as much. I mean, there's part of it is your serendipity, but you also want your details too. You don't want somebody that's gonna come in here and feel like they're working for free, maybe. So I just ask that you guys maybe reconsider some of that pay change. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have your address, sorry, sorry?
I haven't, I haven't sold you Henry now, I live in town here.
Can that be changed afterwards, after election?
That, that specific matter is on your agenda later. Um, and then any, any change, any change in salary, whether it's up or down, can't take effect until after the next election, so, um, for example, if this wasn't adopted tonight and there were no changes, then, um, the next council then would, would be able to vote on it themselves, but then it wouldn't take effect until after the next council election in twenty sixteen. What did you say? Well, it says, I mean, the statute says, no, it can be temporary reduction for not to exceed twelve months. But, and so everything can really be temporary, you vote on it, so I think it's kind of a six of one, that doesn't mean the other.
So if they increase it tonight, that could go into effect next year, two thousand and fifteen?
Yes.
So it's not based off elections, it's based off when a council takes a turn, right?
I understand. My understanding is they cannot, the election has already taken place, so it cannot change now until twenty seventeen, till the next election, which would be two thousand and sixteen.
Wow.
Their mental guess tonight is just...
It's not necessarily reduce it either, it's just to change the, how you calculate that to a flat basis instead of a per meeting basis. Sometimes if you have, um, one meeting a month, it might be actually increased because your flat rate is a higher rate. You often don't have one a month, so, I mean, it balances out, I think, to a net reduction.
Ray Henry, fighter, could speak to this just a moment, would mind?
Yep.
Ray Gubens, mayor-elect. Um, I've just spoken with Jill and with Melissa, and they're fine with the change there. I know that this issue came up before the council, and I believe it passed unanimously, if I'm not mistaken. So as far as the new council elect, they're fine with that change as well. And we'll be fine working for the, the sum that we get is not gonna change my, my tax bracket. Thank you.
Thank you.
Two dollars an hour.
There you go. Anybody else have any questions? They don't, we'll move on to Red County Sheriff's Department report.
Come on.
No.
So can we have a, we have a public hearing? Close the, close the taxation meeting and open the...
Need a motion for that.
I'll make a motion to close the taxation public hearing.
I'll second that. Motion by Michelle, second by Lloyd, we'll close taxation hearing. Michelle, how do you vote?
Aye.
Lloyd?
Aye.
Ben?
Aye.
I vote aye, motion carried for. And open the meeting back up. Red County Sheriff's Department report.
No.
We don't have a deputy here.
Well, you have, you have to vote on the levy, you have the number eight.
Oh, levy and budget for taxes, two percent. Okay. Need a motion for vote on levy and budget, two thousand and fifteen?
I'll make a motion to approve the two thousand and fifteen levy and budget.
I'll second that. Motion by Michelle, second by Henry, to approve the levy and budget. Lloyd, how do you vote?
I've got a quick, um, comment. Are we sure that we have enough in this, um, proposed budget for, uh, legal matters?
Would that be on your debt service, Wendy?
It, it would be under revenue, the first one on the levy.
The first one, okay.
Do you even have a hand up, will we have for, set aside for legal services?
I think it's thirty thousand.
That's correct.
Can we have a month, no, for legal services under the red?
Ralph Lee, what do you, um, figure, just, just representing the council for council meetings and the average amount of emails and phone calls, what would it be a year? Just kind of shooting from the hip.
Since I've been here in March, it's, uh, when you have kind of a usual month of just moderate work, it's been, I think the low end was eight hundred dollars a month, and the high end was two thousand, it was just the moderate. If there's special items, like we had investigation earlier, and any other, the digits or proceedings, you know, it could be higher than that, it could be three to four, so.
Yeah, then on five, I mean, I've seen that in other cities, so. One month of, uh, of high, you were basically blown through it.
I guess thirty thousand in the budget is, you know, twenty-six hundred a month or thereabouts.
Was everybody happy with that? So, Lloyd, how do you vote?
Aye.
Ben?
I don't know.
Michelle?
Aye.
I vote aye, motion carried, three to one. Red County Sheriff's Department report, but we don't have a deputy here. I want to report some recommendations of city departments, consultant commissions, and committees. City council monthly activity report for November two thousand and fourteen. I attended the planning and zoning meeting, everything went great on that, Joanne filled everybody in on that. So, well, update from November planning commission meeting.
Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, including your packet on, um, page twenty-seven through thirty are minutes from the November third special planning commission meeting. And then also on pages thirty-two to thirty-five are the draft minutes from the November nineteenth meeting, and those items will be discussed as part of tonight's agenda. If you have any questions on the discussion or minutes, I'm happy to answer them.
Here, now, would you like me to proceed to planning item B, planning commission appointment? Okay, the second item on the planning commission report is an appointment to the planning commission, um, due to the recent resignation of Georgina Stanley Lloyd Doppa. Um, we currently have two openings on the planning commission. Um, we do have two applications that are included in your packet on pages thirty-six to forty. Planning commission reviewed those applications at the meeting on November nineteenth, and they are recommending to the city council the appointment of Charles Smallwood, um, beginning at our December meeting later this month.
I'll make a motion to accept Charles Smallwood to planning and zoning?
I'll second that. Motion by Michelle, second by Lloyd to accept Charles Smallwood to planning commission appointment. Johnson, how do you vote?
Aye.
Michelle?
Aye.
Ben?
Aye.
I vote aye, motion carried for. Welcome aboard. Okay, then we got ordinance twenty fourteen dash four, redone land B dash two institutional.
Now, if you recall, um, mayor, council, members of the public, at our last meeting, we had a comprehensive plan amendment. It regited land that's along the north side of the city, from, um, highway to the Schulte Institutional. The city had acquired this land through tax forfeiture, so it needs to be utilized as public purpose. And, and I believe, you, um, go on to the next page, um, it will show approximately where that land is located. There are two different parcels, one is seventeen point two nine acres in size, and the other is two point one five acres in size. And both of those are anticipated to serve as a regional park for the community. With the comprehensive plan now guiding it for institutional use, we are bringing our zoning map into compliance with the comp plan and going through the official process to rezone it. The planning commission conducted a public hearing on this at their November nineteenth meeting, followed, um, publication and mail notice, and, uh, we did not receive any comments from the public, and it was unanimously recommendation to proceed with the rezoning and amendment to our zoning map. So within your packet is a copy of the ordinance that would, um, make that process complete. It's on page forty-six.
Ordinance number twenty fourteen dash four.
So, we need to, um, hopefully, make a motion to ordinance for twenty fourteen dash four, redone land B dash two institutional. I'll second. Motion by Henry, second by Ben. Dan, how do you vote?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Michelle?
Aye.
I vote aye, motion carried for. And we'll move on to resolution twenty fourteen dash twenty-eight authorization summary publication of ordinance, twenty fourteen dash four.
Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, I'm closing your packet on page forty-seven. It is a copy of a resolution, and this simply provides you with a summary of the action you just previously took in the ordinance. Provides a summary that we had posted in the newspaper, intended to save publication costs rather than publishing the entire ordinance. The summary on the bottom portion of that page just notes that at this meeting tonight, we took action to rezone that property, provides the PID numbers, and notes that, um, the ordinance is in full force and effect upon publication according to law. So it's just summarizing the action to care of earlier, to save publication costs rather than publishing full documents.
I'll make a motion to adopt resolution twenty fourteen dash twenty-eight, authorizing summary publication.
I'll second that. Motion by Michelle, second by Lloyd to, uh, resolution twenty fourteen dash twenty-eight, authorization summary publication of ordinance, twenty fourteen dash four. Michelle, how do you vote?
Aye.
Lloyd?
Aye.
Ben?
Aye.
I vote aye, motion carried for. And we'll move on to resolution twenty fourteen dash twenty, granting variance for six thirty-one Nelson Boulevard, our Dollar General.
Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, audience, um, tonight we are asked to take action on three variance requests submitted by the owner of the lot, Crowe Rosa Investments LLC, and the applicant, Imperial Development Company, LLC, on behalf of Dollar General. Um, this is for the parcel located at six thirty-one Nelson. It is currently the site of former Bayreuth Scherhoff Building. Um, the applicant and, um, owner are proposing to demolish the existing building and construct a new nine thousand one hundred square foot Dollar General on that site. In order to accommodate the proposed construction, uh, three variances are requested, and, and I'm not sure if we can, um, move to the site plan on page fifty-eight. North happens to fall on the left-hand side of this screen. Um, the proposed dark rectangle there is the building. Uh, to the right-hand side on the screen is Highway twelve. Now, the first variance such a question is a rear yard setback. Our city zoning ordinance requires a thirty-foot setback if the building, commercial building is adjacent to a residential district, and a twenty-foot rear yard setback if it's adjacent to commercial property. Um, this is a somewhat unique lot in that, um, the easterly portion of the lot is adjacent to commercial property to the north, and the westerly side has residential property to the north. So it's just the, um, bottom or the northwest corner of that building that actually requires a ten-foot rear yard variance, um, in order to meet, um, setbacks that are desired to accommodate, um, parking and the driveline for delivery trucks. They are proposing to put up a fence as well as trees to buffer from the residential property that's already there. Um, planning commission conducted a public hearing on that and the other two variance requests, and for this portion of it felt that, due to the proximity to the residential properties, um, we should require some facade improvements rather than having steel siding. They requested that the design of the facade be more compatible with that residential home. Um, the applicant is, um, fine with that, and actually submitted plans that show it has a stucco exterior or ethos, so it would blend more with the character of the property to the west as well as to the north. Also with that, um, due to the depth of this lot, and we looked at other commercial properties along the corridor, and most of the commercial lots are much deeper than this lot is. Um, in order to accommodate, again, the driveline and the parking lot with the required, um, stall depth and what they need for delivery trucks, they're requesting a front yard parking variance of six feet. Uh, the zoning ordinance requires that parking lots be ten feet off of the min dot right-of-way or property line. In this case, they're requesting, um, the parking lot be within four feet, or again, a six-foot variance. Um, the planning commission looked at other parking lots, um, in the highway corridor, and felt that this would not alter the essential character of the neighborhood, that we have some existing parking lots that are also approaching within that ten-foot setback. And then the final or third variance request is for the driveway width of thirty-six feet. And as you can see on the south, uh, or the bottom portion of that picture, rather, is the west side of that lot, uh, an access point would come off of Garfield Avenue and access into the lot. Uh, there will be no access onto Highway twelve. Uh, Min Dot did have comments, and a letter from them is included within your packet. Uh, the original drawing that was provided to the planning commission for their public hearing had that driveway access shifted a little bit farther to the south or pulls through Highway twelve. Min Dot requested that be moved to the north in order to allow more stacking distance before cars or vehicles turned in, and they were able to modify it to meet the existing curb cut entrance, and Min Dot has submitted a letter saying that they are, um, fine with that alteration. Um, so with that, the planning commission, following the public hearing, published notice, uh, notice to property owners within a hundred fifty feet, conducted the hearing, and is unanimously recommending approval, conditioned again upon that modification to the facade, um, with a ethos that appears to be stucco, and then allowing... and then allowing the ten-foot rear yard variance, the thirty-six-foot wide driveway, and the six-foot front yard variance for the parking lot. And the conditions of the resolution are followed on page sixty-two of your packet.
Thank you, Angela.
For giving a heavy nasty cold going on. Um, in past, excuse me, in past years, fire departments always been involved in the planning stages. I'm sure with the changing of the guards and everything that's been going on in City Hall, I had a small overlook. I had about two minutes prior coming over here, and there was a planning packet over next door on the big table, and I got a chance to review it. You're talking a ten-foot setback between the building and the neighbor's property?
I'm sorry, no, a twenty-foot, a ten-foot variance.
Okay, all right, there's some, okay, that's a little bit better. Yeah, but what kind of trees are they gonna put back there?
The landscape plan will be going to planning commission next month or on December nineteenth, so.
I'm thinking, I'm thinking that, you know, if we have to be back there pulling hoses.
Sure.
Um, also, state fire codes, is this building gonna be sprinkled?
We don't have the official building plans with that, but.
Without doing any research on it, but I'm thinking that if it's not sprinkled, we need to have a fire department access road all the way around the building. But don't quote me on that. I, research needs to go into it, but it's coming to my mind. So that's why I'm trying to bring notes up before. I don't wanna hold up progress, but at the same time, I wanna express concerns before something happens.
I think there'll be enough learning, Jason, in that part there. The way it works, the way we come up with his diagram and all that stuff for a fire department to answer back there. We'll make sure that it is right, so we can get this door going.
Yeah, so, that's all I have, thanks. Thank you.
And the site's building and landscape, parking lot plan will be going to the planning commission for review on December seventeenth, so I'll make sure I get a copy of that, the full set, to you. And I apologize for the variance portion, we didn't do that, but I appreciate your comments. So the types of trees, et cetera, we'll have a opportunity to comment on with our next review process.
I'll make a motion to adopt resolution twenty-fourteen dash twenty, granting variances for six thirty-one Nelson Boulevard.
I'll second that. Motion by Michelle, second by Lloyd to adopt resolution twenty dash fourteen dash twenty, granting variances for six thirty-one Nelson Boulevard, Dollar General. Johnson, now you vote.
Aye.
Ben?
Aye.
Michelle?
Aye.
I vote aye, motion carried forward. Engineering, resolution twenty-fourteen dash twenty-six, reserve of Montrose.
Thank you, mayor, council. Uh, November twenty-fifth, the Ray County Board of Commissioners, their, their committee, tax forfeiture committee, met to discuss the reserve of Montrose and set the sale, the price for the sale of the land. I attended that meeting. The two commissioners that were present that are part of the committee are Charlie Burrell and, um, I'm trying to name this case right now, I'll think of it anyway. Those two, those two individuals, um, expressed full support of the, of the city's position to take over the preserve and purchase the preserve and a dollar per lot. They saw the, the need to complete infrastructure upgrades in that area prior to selling it or as part of the sale. So they, they understood the blighted condition of the property, and they are gonna recommend to the board, um, sale of the property at one dollar per lot. So that, that official action has not happened, why the county commissioners yet, but will go to their board meeting on December sixteenth. So in order for you to proceed, if there is a resolution that needs to be passed by the city agreeing to the purchase at one dollar per lot, that resolution is included in your packet. It lists each PID number. Um, there's a lot of PID numbers because it's one PID number for each individual total home lot as per, per the current plan. So that is the action needed tonight is to approve the resolution.
Approve resolution twenty-fourteen dash twenty, dash twenty-six.
Second.
Motion by Ben, second by Michelle to reserve, resolution twenty-fourteen dash twenty-six. Lloyd, now you vote.
Aye.
Ben?
Aye.
Michelle?
Aye.
And I vote aye, motion carried forward.
Thank you.
Public court, school crossing.
Uh, a little bit of information for, uh, mayor, council, tonight, back in November, which seems to be a lifetime ago. It was brought up about the school crossing here on Conroe twelve and Second Street South. Uh, back when we were discussing that, there was no school on the ground yet, and fall was still with us. However, things have changed dramatically since then, and, uh, don't think we'd be able to do it until spring now. However, did get some information regarding that, as requested by the council at the last meeting. Did some research online for some stenciling products where I could have our crew out there and stencil the road. They're eight-foot tall letters, and they range anywhere from price of four hundred fifteen to six hundred dollars just for the stencil. And that does include the paint for the glass beads. Uh, there is a company on Maple Lake called Highway Traffic Marketing Services. Uh, they would be able to do that for us, then stencil the northbound lane and the southbound lane. Um, if we were to do it with paint, at approximately seven hundred and fifty dollars. And if we decided to go with the epoxy, which is a much stronger wear item, which I would recommend in that area due to traffic volumes, um, at the price of fifteen hundred dollars. Um, so that's a little information there I've got for you tonight. Don't need to make a decision tonight, we're still quite ways out, but, uh, if you wanna pursue this further, we certainly can.
How often do you think you would need to touch up that paint?
Paint would have to be done yearly.
Every year? Then what about the old epoxy, you think?
The epoxy, I would hope to get five. We've got some crosswalks on the western side of town on, uh, Highway twelve in Clemente that we haven't touched since it been put in, so. All depends on the traffic volume, snow plowing, and hopefully get five out of it.
Thank you, Sean.
On, on the heels of that too, I just, I, I will let you know I did talk to the school district a little bit further about the flashing crosswalk sign that they have in Buffalo. There was some question about that. They have not had any issues with it performing per se, with the batteries or anything like that. However, they do have some concerns about it just from a, from a, from a visibility perspective and how it's, how effective it is. Um, it's fine at night when it's clear out, but when it's like foggy or something like that, it really doesn't show up very well, and it doesn't show up at all during the daylight, which is probably, you know, to be expected, but, um, they expressed some, some interest in, in another sys, as other systems available, but obviously at a lot higher cost. So I think if that's something that they would wanna pursue, you know, further discussion would have to be had on that as far as what the city's willing to participate with, what the school districts willing to participate.
Right, 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 Justin.
Right, correct. Thank you.
Okay, fire department.
First on the list, we got a resignation, Matt, when we moved out, it's out, man, it just completed its two years, dude was very dedicated, two years, so. The other motion to accept his resignation.
I'll make a motion to accept his resignation.
I'll second that. Motion by Ben, second by Lloyd to accept Matt Paul's resignation. Michelle, now you vote.
Aye.
Lloyd?
Aye.
Ben?
Aye.
And I vote aye, motion carried forward.
All right, next on the list, to complete my three-year project replacing our gear. I received a quote from M E S to purchase some of the five sets of gear that I'll complete over here for, with the exception of four, which are three new hires, and one of our, um, seasoned guys that's at any time ready to hang up the helmet. So he said he did not want new gear, nothing wrong with him, he says, so. My hands off to him for allowing us to say a little bit, but. So, um, the second quote I had was for boots. Uh, if we replace it here, obviously we need to replace our boots. And I'm sorry, I do not have a number with the boots. I'd like to do eight sets of boots. So the eight sets would be two thousand six thirty-two. With the gear, the total project would be ten thousand nine eighty-seven plus here.
Would you have that in your budget or?
We have plenty in our budget, to be honest with you. And this goes to chiefs prior to me of getting this set up. With purchase, with the purchase of our engine, which was almost a six hundred thousand dollar project, which everything is paid for. End of October, we had three hundred thirty-four thousand six seventy-two fifteen between our operating budget and our capital, and we have second half coming. So we're sitting here right now. But that goes to previous chiefs before us that we got set up now.
I'll make a motion for fire department for new fire gear boots. I'll second that. Motion by Henry, second by Johnson. Dan, now you vote.
Aye.
Lloyd?
Aye.
Michelle?
Aye.
And I vote aye, motion carried forward.
Thank you. The new truck is in service. We're just missing one thing for it, and they're actually getting, they're getting delivered tomorrow night. It's our portable radios. Guys, we just told them we need to use the truck for our radios, I have a different one, but it's, it's, we're doing another training with it tomorrow night. Which brings us to the next question, our old truck. What is the next step for us in getting rid of that?
Can you put it on eBay and see what you're getting for it, great choice.
I'm not putting, not my eBay, no.
Well, it doesn't make any fire departments have a place serving.
I don't know what the vehicles are on it, so I'm asking.
Well, I suppose we gotta take a vote on it and have Wendy publish it or whatever handy, would that be to us?
Yeah, the, I've been in situations where fire departments have, um, I don't know how much you're gonna ask for.
I've called in a waiting customer fire, he's going to have to help us with our new truck to see if we can give them a ballpark idea of what it's worth.
Okay, 'cause then once we know that, then maybe we could, I don't know if you're in a rush or anything, but once we know that, then we can come back and figure out, we take a public bid process, if people wanna, you know, bid, bid on it, give the best price for it.
Do you have like a closed bid or are you talking like an open bid auction?
In the past, you've done sealed bids.
And do it reserved, so we don't get totally made over the pool? Well, you know, the truck is worth eight thousand dollars, so why should we ever go to the bottom? I mean, I don't know, I just answered.
I mean, it's such a, well, on that, I mean, if that's like typical numbers, it's such a low number that you can typically just enter into a sort of agreement with somebody who wants it, you know. The ones I've been around normally, there's been enough contacts with fire departments in the area that you've been able to just enter for the contract for eight thousand bucks.
Because I know, you know, otherwise customers said they would help us advertise it. We were ready to do it in a week somehow, maybe not in a week, but that's just how it kind of went through. So, I don't know, which, you know, it's a deal.
Well, I think pretty much any and all. Preparing to work with Wendy and yourself on, once you get kind of more of an idea of what the cost might be to figure out.
That's right. And then lastly, thank you. Uh, in the packet, I'll make a few for you. We received a thank you from, Pittenbelly Fire and Rescue. They're a small community to own in between Zom Tharona and Rochester. It, it was kind of, I was on the phone with them for about twenty minutes. And, you know, we designed our truck, there were lots of names and watching how we spent the money and, you know. After having a conversation with them of what they have for equipment, and they have three airbags that are put together with pieces. I mean, we're fortunate enough that we can keep up on the times we're in here and replace it after ten years. They're gonna have enough gear to go around for anybody. So the gear that we donated is, you know, it was outdated for us, but it's a huge improvement for them, so. But maybe it was the, the thank you, it was the winter, the Friday after Thanksgiving, when our firefighters headed down that direction and we went for it.
I think it's great of the fire department doing that, this is really nice, what they sent all for you guys.
It wasn't, it wasn't thrown away, it's still good.
Nice donation, helped somebody else.
So that is all I have. Um, if you could put a, acknowledge it at the end, please.
Okay. Trailblazer update, but Mark is sick, so. I'll put that on hold, I guess. Okay. There we go. Old business. I should have to go in for the audit, make the whole business right.
It kept putting your packets, but it didn't get up to the agenda, so it could wait till January.
When, when does that have to be done, Ryan?
Um, it's just the, the, um, it's their letter, their confirmation letter, so the audit will be done in February.
Could we have a state audit instead?
If you wanna pay the extra money, you still have to have an audit by not, early. Even if you have a state audit.
Could you find out how much it will cost?
How much a state audit would cost?
No.
I doubt it, I have no idea. But I believe we still have to have a forecourt audit by not infirm, even though we have a state audit.
You, you'll check out that, right?
So I didn't have any other old business unless you just had something else to do with business?
Then we can move on to utility rates for twenty fifteen. Decreasing garbage collection rate.
Make a motion to approve resolution twenty-fourteen dash twenty-one.
Second.
Motion by Ben, second by Michelle, for resolution twenty-fourteen dash twenty-one. Michelle, now you vote.
Aye.
Lloyd?
Aye.
Ben?
Aye.
And a vote aye, motion carried, four. And we'll move on to increasing storm sewer system rates, resolution twenty fourteen dash twenty-two.
Make a motion to approve resolution twenty fourteen dash twenty-two.
Second.
Second, motion by Ben, second by Michelle, resolution twenty fourteen dash twenty-two, increasing storm sewer system rates. Lloyd, how you vote?
No.
Michelle?
Aye.
Ben?
Aye.
Vote no. Try two-two. Okay, we'll move on to resolution twenty fourteen dash twenty-three, increasing sanitary sewer system rates.
Make a motion to approve resolution twenty fourteen dash twenty-three.
Second.
Motion by Ben, second by Michelle, resolution twenty fourteen dash twenty-four, increasing sewer access charge. Michelle, how you vote?
Aye.
Lloyd?
Aye.
Ben?
Aye.
And a vote aye, motion carried, four.
That was resolution twenty fourteen dash twenty-three.
Right, come on, right, Cory.
Make a motion to pass twenty fourteen dash twenty-four.
I'll second that motion.
Motion by Michelle, second by Ben, to adopt resolution twenty fourteen dash twenty-four, increasing sewer access charge. Lloyd?
Aye.
Michelle?
Aye.
Ben?
Aye.
And a vote aye, motion carried, four. Resolution twenty fourteen dash twenty-five, increasing water access charge.
Make a motion to pass resolution twenty fourteen dash twenty-five.
Second.
Motion by Ben, second by Michelle, to adopt resolution twenty fourteen dash twenty-five, increasing water access charge. Michelle, how you vote?
Aye.
Lloyd?
Aye.
Ben?
Aye.
And a vote aye, motion carried, four. City ordinance twenty dash fourteen dash five, City of Montrose. Title for salary and mayor council members this fall.
Make motion to adopt ordinance twenty fourteen dash two five.
I'll second that motion.
Motion by Michelle, second by Ben, to adopt ordinance twenty dash, twenty fourteen dash five. Michelle, how you vote?
Aye.
Ben?
Aye.
Lloyd?
Aye.
And a vote aye, motion carried, four. Open forum.
No, we need to do the resolution first, Mayor.
Or resolution, okay.
To approve that ordinance.
Resolution to adopt ordinance twenty fourteen dash five.
I'll make a motion to approve resolution twenty fourteen dash twenty-nine.
I'll second that. Ben, how you vote?
Aye.
Michelle?
Aye.
Lloyd?
Aye.
And a vote aye, motion carried, four. Move on to open forum, Cory.
Thank you, Council Mayor, my name is Cory Dibbitt, I live at three oh two Hope Drive. Thank you for letting me speak this evening, I would like to address the council about the recent termination of the city administrator Barb Swanson. First, I would like to say that I believe the council acted in poor form in terminating her. Over the past three years, Barb has not been a fair shot doing her job. The community were to look back in the record of the city council, they will see that the council has spent our tax dollars on several investigations that led to nothing. And when those led to nothing, the council found another way. What the council did was find a backdoor way to get rid of her. The council called the emergency meeting late Thursday, about a week after the election, when they knew they had three members leaving, and they would not have the votes to get rid of her when the new council was seated. In regards to Barb's responsibilities, I don't believe that the community knows how much responsibility Barb had, how much she did for the city. Everybody has flaws, and I'm sure that Barb has some, but I believe that she had the city's best interests at the forefront. There have been many claims that Barb made too much money for the job she did for the size of the city, I tend to disagree. Considering the responsibilities she had, as well as the time of the city, over twenty-five years, I believe that her benefits and salary were probably in line with what a person in the same position for that period of time would be making. I also believe that we as a community are losing out on a valuable resource due to her many years with the city. Experience and tribal knowledge is irreplaceable. Our new idea is valuable, absolutely, but you can have the best of both worlds with just a little planning. Barb, and I make an assumption here, was close to retirement, and we as a city had a perfect opportunity to plan for that. If those of you out there are not familiar with the concept, there is a term in management called succession planning. That is where you plan for someone to leave, and you actually train someone to take over that job seamlessly. Let me explain a little bit how this works, I've seen this process work firsthand, while I was working at Olympic Steel as a production planning supervisor. I know that I wanted to continue my career, continue moving up in the company, I needed to make sure that there was nothing holding me back, and that included making sure I had a replacement for me. I trained my replacement, and took on a new position, and saw this work perfectly. Now I regress. What I find interesting is that no one in the community has alluded to the fact that our city council has broken a law. As the article in the paper pointed out, they not only broke it once, but three times. That is clearly not something I want the city government in Montrose to be doing. I would expect that this type of behavior from the state and federal level, but this is Montrose, a population of around three thousand. With all that being said, I can clearly see now that this city council will most likely cost the community a lot of money and time, not to mention the morale of the city staff, that is now forced to work many hours to take up the hole left by the vacancy. And I don't see any of the council members stepping up to help the current city staff on those roles. All this coming from the city council that was concerned about fiscal responsibility and keeping taxes down. I recall watching one of the videos of the council meetings, and I recall that Mr. Croftzer made a comment when finding out that the budget was five percent over, that he couldn't vote for that because he told his constituents he would not raise taxes. Again, I can foresee this issue only costing us more money in the long run. Although, another thing that's not been brought up, is the cost of hiring a new administrator, which, by the way, is very expensive, it is very expensive to hire new employees, that is if one person can replace what she did. In conclusion, I can say that I'm very disappointed. No, I'm absolutely irate that the people that we voted into office at this local level would do things, not do things that are best for the city, but instead use their power to, on the council to further a personal agenda. I request that since it's been proven that the city council has broken open meeting law, that all those who are involved with this step down from office, and let the city move forward with a fresh start. Thank you for your time.
Okay, move on to acknowledgements.
I'd like to acknowledge Barb Swanson for her many years of dedication to our community, and to helping me personally with getting through the city council, knowing what I need to do, how things work, and getting me connections with the people to get answers. Thank you, Barb. Would also like to thank Matt Paul for two years of service on the Fire Department, he will be missed.
I would like to thank Jason Chaplin for being my chief of master and assistant head of staff. Joanne, for moving forward with all of the business plans that she has put through this past year. Public Works Anna, Sean, and Wendy for helping the city move forward in this last month or so, and doing the job that they have done.
And we got Georgiana Stanleyway, for her service on planning commission, Montrose Days Committee, MES PAC for holding breakfast with Santa.
Motion to adjourn.
I'll second that. Lloyd, how you vote?
Aye.
Ben? Michelle?
Aye.
And a motion carried, four.